To order, can we have a rule? Oh, I'm sorry Cindy.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry. Oh, you know, before we do roll call, I want to remind, welcome everybody. Oh my goodness, look at all these people. I want to remind everyone that we will be broadcasting live on the YouTube channel. So Cindy.
Heather Owen.
Here.
Annette Eastdeck.
Here.
John McPherson.
Here.
Virginia Mendoza.
Kristen.
Hi, me Fernandez.
Yeah.
Mary Claypool.
Here.
Sandra Ocampo.
Here.
Dr. Denise Gess.
Present.
And Janet, it's very good to see you. Can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Please stand.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You? Um, 1.4 Adoption of the Agenda, are there any changes, additions or additions to the agenda?
No.
We wanted to close in honor.
Yes. Uh, best students. And we might need best help in pronouncing the name.
Oh.
Hemenya Reyes Ortiz, Hemenya? How do you pronounce the?
I don't.
Sorry.
Hemenya, I think, Hemenya?
Yes.
Probably should say Hemenya.
Sorry.
Say Hemenya, I think.
Say Hemenya.
It's hard to pronounce names.
We're gonna, should we close in her honor? Do you want me to, to read this right now? So unfortunately, MCOE Infant Program and community experienced a tragic loss this month. One of our infant students who celebrated her first birthday just one month ago was diagnosed with a rare, rare neurological condition called less encephaly. And she passed away after a long and complicated hospital stay. She survived by her loving dedicated mother, her father, her six-year-old brother, and her one-month-old baby brother. Um, although she encountered ongoing health challenges during her brief time with us, her family encountered countless personal, emotional, and financial hurdles along the way. All the while, the baby, Hemenya, her smile and ginger coos were a shining light through the challenging times. So we will adjourn in honor of Hemenya. Are there any other? Okay, can I get a, a motion to approve the, adopt the agenda?
Some move.
Second. Been moved and approved, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Um, 2.1 Correspondence, Dr. Gus.
No correspondence for this meeting, but later tonight at the public hearing, um, I will share that we did receive some correspondence for that.
Okay, thank you. And then oral comments from the public for any items that are not on the agenda.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam President, Board Trustees, Dr. Gus, Cabinet Members. Most of you know who I am, but for those watching, uh, my name is Janet Wogmuth. I am the President of the American Legion Auxiliary Unit 694 in Marina and the Second Vice President for District 28, which serves Monterey, Santa Cruz, and San Benito Counties. I'm here today to share the opportunities available when schools partner with the American Legion family. The American Legion family includes our veterans, auxiliary members, and the sons of the American Legion. Together, we are committed to supporting students and educators. Here are just a few ways that we can help work with schools. We can connect classrooms with veterans who speak about service, citizenship, and civic engagement, and who participate in flag presentations and related curriculum. We provide school supplies to local schools. For example, our Marina unit recently donated 120 backpacks filled with supplies, socks valued at $9,000 to five of our Marina schools. We support scholarships at every level, both unit, district, state, and locally. Unit 694 awards an $1,000 scholarship to a graduating high school senior from a veteran family with applications also considered at the district level. At the state level, we have multiple scholarships that are available, such as a $4,000 scholarship for students pursuing nursing careers with a veteran connection. Through our Boys State and Girls State, we sponsor students to attend leadership programs where they gain hands-on experience in government, network, and building leadership skills. All expenses, which is their lodging, meals, and often transportation, are covered by the units and posts depending on the program. I brought to you today material to details about your local post and available scholarships, so you can see the scope that we offer. And in those posts, it gives you all the information of where they're located at and who to contact. I urge you to reach out to your local post, get a connection with us. We can bring you, those veterans, we can help engage civic engagements. The civics that you ask for to be made sure in the schools from our K to 12, we have curriculum for. Um, also, I'd like to remind you that in May is our Poppy Month, which is a red poppy that goes to symbol memorial for all of our veterans that we have lost. I want to thank you for your time and considering how the American Legion family can partner with our schools. And I'd be happy to answer any questions and/or come talk to the superintendent's meetings if so needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Definitely. So.
Can I make a comment?
I, yeah.
Well, actually, wait, I'm so sorry because that was public comment, you can't.
Yeah, it's not agendized.
But if you will.
About this. Give. You, I'd just like to say thank you to Janet for being here today and bringing us so valuable information in regards that any kid can apply for this special program and not necessarily need to be a veteran family. So I just wanted to say thank you, and I will invite you to come more often. And this is great, Janet, so if we, we can get together with the superintendent and start working and pushing this agenda forward, I think this is what we need to see more involvement in our MCOE Board Trustees.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Um, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Let me get, uh, Mary.
I'd have to call 3.5.
Okay, it's been requested to call 3.5.
Move to approve with that poll.
Get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. And the 8, okay.
Do we need to? She was asking if you wanted to discuss 3.5 now, but because we have some time certainties, it's, yeah.
Are we ready? Can we move, we can't move on to our time certain yet because it's 3:09. We need to do one more. Okay, so, um, no unfinished business action items. I'm gonna move on to 6.1, New Business Action Item Adoption of Resolution Number 252605. Board Member Absent Sandra Ocampo, that's in page 35 of the agenda, Dr. Gus.
Yes, so, um, as per our board policies, when we have a board member who is absent, they may request that they are still, they still receive their board member compensation if their absence meets one of the identified criteria. And in this case, um, this absence was due to a family member's illness, as noted on the form. And so, um, the matter at hand is to approve this absence and the, um, board compensation that usually happens when there's not an absence. Is that the best way to say it?
There any discussion on this item?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. All right, 310. So we can move on to our time certain presentation. We're going to go to 8.1. Oops, sorry. Presentation of Resolution Number 252601, Recognizing California Native American Day. Um, it's page 59 in your agenda. And I have something to read here, California Native American Day. The California County Board of Education is honored to present the California Native American Day Resolution to the Ojolone Costonian Esalon Nation, the Tribal Chairwoman Louise J. Miranda Ramirez. This is a vibrant tribal community of over 600 members in the Monterey Bay region with ties to 19 ancestral villages. The tribe is dedicated preserving its rich cultural heritage, reviving traditional practices, and advocating for federal recognition and the return of ancestral lands. Under the leadership of Tribal Chairwoman Louise Miranda Ramirez, the Ojolone Coston- No, I'm not sure I'm saying that right.
Um, Coston No.
Esalon Nation works tirelessly to protect sacred sites, reclaim ancestral lands, and promote cultural revitalization, revitalization for future generations. So, uh, Louise, can you come forward, please?
We want to give you a few minutes, um, just for the audience, so everyone knows kind of how, when we're presenting a resolution, how it works. We invite our honored guests to come up to the podium and just share any information that you would like to share with us before presenting the resolution. And then, um, after your presentation, then our county board has a beautiful resolution that they would like to present to you. And then we're gonna, going to ask you and any other members that are with you today, please come to the front. We're all gonna come from behind the podium to the front, and then we'd also like to take a memorial vote. So.
Thank you.
So I would say. I'm sure many of you know what today is. Today is the 175th anniversary of the state of California. I was watching a video where Supervisor Luis Alejo sent a resolution to the capital Sacramento, because Monterey County, Monterey City was the California's first capital. 175 years ago, which is 1850. Wow. It's 175 years of California history. But what was really happening to make that happen? The US military takes over California. The murder of my ancestors, treaties never ratified. My people being removed from their homeland and enslaved by vagrant laws. Our families' land grants in the Treaty of Hidangal taken by sergeant. 175 years later, we are still with no homeland. Promises of land, but we can't build homes. We can't grow enough food on that land to feed our people because of the state's restrictions. 175 years ago, and California Indians living on the coast still are taught that their ancestors were hunters and gatherers, living happily at the missions. We still don't exist to the United States and California governments. Our history is beyond the Spanish, beyond the Mexican government. I ask that you, as the educators of our homeland, teach the correct history of the Esalon of Monterey County. You have control over not only our children, but all indigenous children. Teach them the pain of our ancestors because we need to move on. We need to make the changes, and we can't do that if you guys don't approve the correct curriculum that we're trying to submit forward. We know it's a big government mess. But we're trying, and we ask you to do the same. So I just want to finish with. I just need you to drink water if I translate that. My people, we are here. Our homeland, we are here. Everyone, we are here. Yesterday, we lived here. Today, we live here. Forever, we will live here. Our people sing here. We sing here. We will always sing here. Our people dance here. We dance here. We will always dance here. We are one people. We live. Esalon lives. We exist. Esalon exists. We are here. We exist. We are here. We exist, and we will always exist here. Thank you. Ni ma xie er nao, pei se le fei.
And before our board president jumps into the resolution, I, I just want to comment and say we loved the comment about, please make sure that you are educating our young people with the correct information. We here at the County Office of Education have an amazing recording studio. Perfect timing for Terri Pimentel, our Communications Officer, to step in here. Oh, and we have Nico in the back, who is our videographer. We would absolutely love it if we could talk about the possibility of creating maybe a video where you can help us, uh, video the message with the right information, the right curriculum that we would be able to share with all of the 24 school districts and eight charter schools in our county. We, we want to do, um, the, the education, especially about our local tribes. We want to do it right and in partnerships. So if that's something you consider, um, maybe after the meeting, please do let us know.
Yeah, we are working with Hartnell College, some of the lecturers there, and we'll be doing a presentation at each school this year. So we're trying to make a difference to know, you know, you have a few tribes. People always ask me, what's the right tribe? Well, you know, just like all politics, um, if someone is unhappy with the government, they go start a new tribe. So we are the historical tribe. And that's what's important, to prove your history, to prove your genealogy, to know exactly who you come, who you are, and where you come from. My great-grandfather and great-grandmother are buried right here in Salinas, and they were identified by Congress in 1906 as the Monterey Band of Monterey at the Serantaria. So that's the last time there was a historical record by Congress. So know that we know, and we've researched, and we want to make sure everybody knows that, that we're still here. And that's the whole thing. We are still here. We exist. Thank you.
Thank you.
Some of our students are supposed to be here as well, so I didn't know if they came.
And.
I don't have chuggles out there.
Okay, well, please ask them, come, come on in.
They're not out there yet.
Our board president is going, not here yet, but any of the students that are here that are working with you, please have everyone come in. Uh, our board president is going to be reading the resolution, and then we'll ask all of you to please come front and center and we're happy to make this presentation of the resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm gonna read a little bit of the resolution. It's Resolution Number 252601, Recognizing California Native American Day, Friday, September 26, 2025. Whereas in 1968, Governor Ronald Reagan established American Indian Day on the 4th Friday in September. And in 1998, the California Legislature designated California Native American Day as a state holiday. And whereas California hosts more federally and non-federally recognized tribes than any other state with nearly 100 reservations or rancherias, and California Native American Day, observed on September 26, 2025, honors Native American triumphs, struggles, and customs. And whereas enrich its cultural diversity, California's 109 federally recognized and 45 non-federally recognized tribes, including those indigenous to Monterey County for over 10,000 years. And whereas with over 11,000 people who identify as Native American or Californian Indian in Monterey County and descendants of indigenous populations, still practicing languages, history, and traditional skills in order to preserve the traditions of their ancestors. The Monterey County Board of Education is committed to emphasizing the extensive history of California tribal groups in classrooms and improving the academic and social emotional outcomes for Native American students and all students in the region. And it goes on, um, now let it therefore be resolved that the Monterey County Board of Education adopts Resolution Number 252601 to honor the Ojolone Costonian Esalon Nation and recognize California Native American Day on September 26, 2025, to celebrate the achievements and contributions of indigenous peoples in California. So thank you so much. If you want to come forward, we're gonna.
Yes, so we want you front and center here. Thanks for our board president. And what we may have to do, Terri, do you need a few folks to sit in the front? Maybe you're trying to come in the front, maybe even just kneel. Yeah, that way we can see everyone. Uh, Cassie Fernandez at the end. Are you having more students coming in? A little bit tighter. Everybody like. Come real tight.
Squeeze in there. Right.
One, two, three. Two, one more. Okay. Thank you, Terri.
Thank you for coming.
We look forward to the curriculum that you have gathered. Congratulations again. Thank you so much. Thanks, guys. Thank you for being here today. This is wonderful. We love it when students are here. Thank you, thank you.
And other people know that parts of Indigenous.
Love to see what the curriculum is. How do we help educate all the educators? Looking forward to it. Okay. You can ask when you're ready to go.
And thank you for allowing all of my students to come in here. They're very nice. I just want to let you know, I, I know it's a distance in San Jose, at San Jose State University on the 20th and 21st, we, we will be celebrating American Indian Day. And I and the Muakmaloney, uh, ex-Vice Chair will be doing, um, tables of free jewelry. So what we'll be doing, you gotta make it. I won't make the supplies, but you gotta make it. And you're all welcome. It's open to the public. So remember that, the 20th and 21st. At San Jose State.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. They had any comments? Or?
I add to, uh, to the chairwoman's, uh. Just. We are working on holding a presentation for Friday, uh, Friday, September 26th in the morning. Friday, October, Friday, September 26th is, um, California Native American Day. I'm sure you probably already know that. And, uh, our intention is with our Hartnell, um, course intro to Native Americans in this, in the Salinas Valley, is to hold, uh, a community session, learning session in each of the five campuses, uh, throughout the valley. And we're working toward coordinating something for the 26th of September. Hartnell campuses? Uh, yes, of the five Hartnell campuses, beginning at the East Dallas Al campus on Friday, September 26th, and repeating these same presentations at all the other campuses between September 26th and November. Um, and I hope there's someone that I can relay the information to directly and so that the community. So that the community is, will be invited. It will be an open session, uh, with the support of our students from our course and under the leadership of the Tribal Chair, Louise J. Miranda Ramirez. Thank you.
Any comments on the board, from the board, before we move on to the next? All right, so we're gonna move on to 8.2, Presentation of Resolution Number 252602, Recovery, uh, Recognizing National Recovery Month, page 61 of the agenda. And I have a little.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, National Recovery Month, the Monterey County Board of Education is proud to present the National Recovery Month Resolution to Door to Hope, a beacon of compassion and transformation in our community. For over fifty years, Door to Hope has provided comprehensive behavioral health services, supporting thousands of children, teens, men, and women, and families in their recovery from substance abuse, substance use, and mental health challenges. Through innovative and culturally sensitive programs, they foster hope, resilience, and healing. We honor their unwavering commitment to rebuilding lives and strengthening our community. Here today with us is Anna Marquez, Director of S U D Services, Chris Shannon, Executive Director, Brian Gonzalez, and Cynthia Ferkson. Did I say that right? If you want to come forward, please.
Like to share a little bit about Door to Hope, a little bit more than what our board president already shared or any additional information, and then we'll look into.
Thank you so much. I'm Chris Shannon. I'm the Executive Director at Door to Hope. Uh, and this year I celebrated my twenty-fifth anniversary of working with Door to Hope. Which is wonderful. It's been the best job I've ever had and, uh, have the opportunity not only to work with this wonderful community, but also to work with our wonderful staff. So we are very, very pleased and to be honored in this manner. To be working with the schools, uh, has been very, very important to us through the years. And even more importantly, uh, these last probably eight to ten years, we've been able to do a whole lot more with the schools because we're also being able to get more grants for prevention and early intervention, which is very, very important. Our youngest programs, we have programs for, uh, children zero to five, particularly those children that have been exposed to trauma and to substance, uh, to have mothers that use substances during their pregnancies and the problems that that causes. But we have been very, very pleased to, through the years. It's been, um, almost fifty years that Door to Hope opened, uh, its first program on Clay Street, uh, that beautiful house on Clay Street, uh, in which again to be able to let you know is we will be doing a campaign, uh, to try to, we have to, um, we have to, uh, change the roof. And that, uh, if you're familiar with our home on one sixty-five Clay Street, it kind of looks like a house that was, um, that was really supposed to be in Carmel as opposed to be in Salinas because it's got one of those beautiful cottage roofs. And unfortunately, those beautiful cottage roofs cost a lot of money. So we are, we are working very, very hard to raise money because of course we want to be able to replace that roof in exactly the same manner as it is now. Uh, and that was originally the Hayward family home. Um, and, um, so we're very pleased to be able to continue that tradition. Uh, and very pleased that our residents and our programs are able to benefit from a home that is very attractive, very welcoming, and give them, uh, the services that they need to provide in their longer-term recovery options. So we're very, very pleased with, uh, to be here. We're very pleased to be recognized in this manner and only hope to be able to, uh, offer more and more services, uh, to our community and to our schools. So I want to, uh, be able to, uh, recognize and introduce Anna Marquez, who's our Head of Substance Use Disorder Services, which is what the SUD stands for, and, uh, her staff members, uh, both Cindy and Brian, who are working in the schools. Uh, and if they would like to say a word, um, I'll hand it over to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for, um, having us here today and acknowledging, um, recovery itself, right? It's not just about Door to Hope, but it's about recovery and, um, you know, the, the idea that people do recover. So it's, you know, that's, we're in this field because of the disease of addiction, but we're also in this field for, for the joy of recovery. So, um, thank you for, for recognizing that. You know, and, and we, you know, we're, we're just glad to be able to continue our, our work that we're doing in the community with, with youth. And, um, you know, Brian and Cindy are the ones that are doing a lot of the boots-on-the-ground work with the youth. So I wanted to let them say anything if they want.
Sure.
Good afternoon. My name is Brian Gonzalez. I'm the Utah Patient Counselor for Door to Hope. Um, it's an honor to be here. It's an honor to be able to go into, um, the schools and the juvenile institutions, right? And provide services that are very important, right? Um, there's a stigma when, when it comes to addiction, right? And, um, as someone with, uh, as someone with experience in addiction and recovery, uh, November twenty-ninth, I'll have four years clean from all, uh, from, uh, thirty-nine. And, um, it's a privilege to be able to go into the, um, MCOE, MCOE schools, right? Um, as a former MCOE student myself, right? It's an honor and a privilege to be able to speak to the students, right, and to the youth and share my experience, strength, and hope, right, and not be shameful because it happens unfortunately, right? And, um, thank you. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I guess, um, I just got started with, well, it's been a few months that I got started with Door to Hope and I just feel, feel very happy that, uh, I'm getting to work with the youth in the community and, um, doing, just doing the best I can to work best with them and, um, just really happy that I have the support of, of the staff at Door to Hope. So, um, just, yeah, thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Something that came to mind when Brian was speaking because it's a perfect example of like the, the joy of recovery. So we've, we've done a couple of presentations at different MCOE sites. One of them is the, uh, the Flight School. I can't remember. Bob Hoover Academy, yeah. And, um, we did an ARCAM presentation and Brian saw one of his teachers. And it was really this like full circle moment for him of like, you know, being that kid and then seeing one of his teachers and he's in this position now where he gets to come and share this information and share his experience with, with other kids. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
All right, I'll read the resolution. Are there any comments from the board members? John?
Yeah, well, I, uh, in my previous job before I retired, I worked with, uh, Chris pretty closely for a couple of years and it just cemented what a wonderful job, uh, the, the Door to Hope does. And it's so wonderful to see, uh, MCOE alumni doing such wonderful things. So keep up the great work.
Thank you. John, any others? Okay, I'm gonna read resolution number twenty-five, twenty-six oh two, recognizing national recovery month. Whereas established in nineteen eighty-nine, National Recovery Month is observed annually each Septem- September to educate society that substance use treatment and mental health services can enable those with mental and/or substance use disorders to live healthy, fulfilling, and rewarding lives. And whereas in the, the two thousand twenty-five National Recovery Month theme, "Join the Voices for Recovery, Together We Are Stronger," underscores the power of community support and collective effort in overcoming substance use and mental health disorders and fostering resilience and unity. And whereas this theme highlights the vital role, role of first responders, healthcare workers, community leaders, educators, and advocates in supporting recovery and uniting to promote equitable access to treatment, evidence-based programs, and community resources to help individuals rebuild their lives with purpose and strength. And whereas the ongoing crisis of overdose deaths involving fentanyl and the new and emerging drugs continue to devastate Monterey County and the nation, with National Recovery Month raising critical awareness about the dangers of fentanyl, particularly its presence in counterfeit pills, where even a small amount can lead to a fatal overdose. And it goes on. Um, now therefore be it resolved that Monterey County Board of Education adopts resolution number twenty-five, twenty-six zero-two to recognize September as a National Recovery Month and invites school communities to educate students and families about mental and substance use disorders, encouraging advocacy for and priori- prioritization of mental health services. So congratulations so much and thank you for all you do for our community.
Get in there. Okay, ready? One, two, three. Nice. Especially for taking great care of our kids.
Nice to meet you. Thank you so much. Oh, and thank you for your nice words. Just be careful.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
So we are moving on to eight point three, the presentation of resolution number twenty-five, twenty-six zero-three, recognizing National Hispanic Heritage Month. It's on page sixty-three of the agenda. National Hispanic Heritage Month, the Monterey County Board of Education is honored to present the National Hispanic Heritage Month Resolution to Building Healthy Communities for Their Transformative Work in Advancing Social Equity and Community Well-Being. For decades, building healthy communities has empowered Hispanic and Latino communities through collab- collaborative, action-oriented, oriented initiatives that address emerging needs, foster cultural pride, and promote health, education, and economic opportunities. Their dedication to innovative solutions and inclusive partnerships strengthens our diverse fabric, celebrating the rich heritage and contributions of Hispanic Americans. Here with us today are members of Building Healthy Communities to include Alma Cervantes, Director of Education Equity Policy and Strategy for Building Healthy Communities, Monterey County. So can you please come forward? Thank you.
That was a couple of additional things really quickly. I think it's important for the whole world to know. We also partner with Building Healthy Communities on some very important work. About seven years ago, when we first launched our All In for Equity Conference, planning, co-planning that conference and lifting it up together and co-sponsorship really allowed us to open it far and wide to more educators than would have been possible to participate without the help of Building Healthy Communities. They, they sponsored, along with Building Healthy Communities and Action Council, they, they were major sponsor that initial year and every year their after have also played a very important role in that conference. Also, an amazing partner with us in the community schools work. Not just us, but all of the districts that have community schools and so much more. And so we have been working side by side with Alma and the Building Healthy Communities team for many years and we're just so very grateful for the partnership and all the support that you provide.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Uh, before I start my comments, I would love my part of our team, which is the people at the forefront with all the work that they do, youth, parents, uh, health workers, that really makes this happen. So if they could stand up, this is the faces of the people that you might not see every time, but this is who makes the, the work real. And just like we talk to all the communities, we're guaranteeing you're going to see from your mistakes that are committed to give back to their community. So just want to honor that, um, on that. So thank you. Uh, first of all, thank you, uh, board members, president, vice president. Is with deep appreciation that we accept the recognition on behalf of Building Healthy Communities, Monterey County. Um, as the only black and brown later organization, um, in Monterey County, actively organizing to address age of, of education equity, justice, housing inequities, economic access, and healthcare, uh, BHC holds a unique and vital role in our region. Uh, historically, our work has sometimes been perceived as critical and sometimes oppositional to existing systems. But what we truly bring to the table is a deep commitment to being a partner in building more just and equitable communities. We're not here to tear down. We're here to co-create. Our aim is to center community voice and leadership in designing real impactful solutions with our system. Today, I want to take a moment to highlight some of the more contributions BHC has made, not just to Monterey County Office of Education, but to our broader community as a whole. For example, it was mentioned, community schools, we were critical and advocate for the funding and funding and the framework and the sustainability since it was at risk. So we organized at a state level to make sure our, our schools got the funding that was needed. We also have the rent protection and rent stabilization here in Salina, which is impacting a lot of our youth and residents about really, uh, the crisis that we're facing with housing and our team, uh, Nibia and Chagul, which are some of the leads are organizing around that. And you might know how that is connected to education, housing, right, the crisis we're facing. Uh, we're also co-leading the Monterey County Immigration Response Coalition, which is a coalition that is built with schools, institutions, and community organizations to respond to the impact of immigration here in Monterey County. And we support in anything of helping the families, empowering families to know their rights and helping them complete the child safety plan in schools and helping families. So we're partnering, especially Dr. Bella has been key for this, uh, work to kind of partner with schools to protect our families during this time. We also cultivating, uh, recruiting black and brown educators through the lens of economy and housing. So we're part of Salinas's Inclusive Economic Development Initiative through the Community Foundation. And we are one of the partners that is really creating a foundation to center educators at the forefront in addressing some of the root causes, which is housing too as well. So we're looking forward to partner with MCOE to amplify more housing for educators. Health access, as you know, is a bit risky right now, uh, health access, especially for our more vulnerable communities. So we have our health workers who are, uh, supporting families to fill medical, uh, also providing resources in schools. So they're also available to partner with schools. And then on the part of programming, uh, in schools, we have youth development, La Cosecha, parent development in schools to empower parents through Mi Vida y Mi Futuro, which is the Right Futures, educating parents how to navigate the education system and be part of conversation with their kids of how to apply for scholarship, FAFSA, A through G. So that's, that's part of our contribution to not only the schools, but the community as a whole. So, uh, lastly, uh, as we approach Hispanic Heritage Month, this is a very powerful moment to not only celebrate our culture or history and contribution, but also amplify the voices and story of our diverse Latino community, especially in a time when we continue to be faced with challenges and narratives that don't reflect the true of who we are. So greatly appreciate for the recognition and often to foster a strength or relationship together in our commitment to you. Thank you.
Before I read a little bit from the resolution, I'd like to open it up to the board for any comments? Yes.
Yes, ma'am, sure. Thank you. Um, I'd just like to say that you are a wonderful team. They put and move at a state level, federal agendas. And all of you are a hundred percent committed to represent the voices of our students from K through twelve and all the way to college. I am very proud to see you also giving yourself a hundred percent when you become part of a local control funding formula. I've seen you in action, you know, and that is beautiful because you bring the eyes, the thinking of the community, to the staff and the superintendent. And you said it clearly, I was once or twice in one of those meetings. This is what we need. And they were saying, no, this is not, we're not, we don't have the budget. Well, we have to look it up and put it in the budget. And John, these people are amazing. And if they're offering to work with the MCOE in any regards, Dr. Gass, and you know them well as I do, welcome on board. Thank you so much for being a hundred percent committed to our community and not just county-wide, but state and federal ways. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sandra. Any other comments? Thank you, Sandra. Any other comments from the board? Right. I'm going to, nope, I gotta read the resolution. This is resolution number twenty five, twenty six, oh, three. I'll keep it short, John.
That's fine.
National Hispanic Heritage Month, September fifteenth to October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Whereas the Monterey County Board of Education proudly recognizes National Hispanic Heritage Month from September fifteenth to October fifteenth, celebrating the culture, heritage, and contributions of Hispanics and Latinos in our communities. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Observance began in nineteen sixty-eight as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson, was expanded to National Hispanic Heritage Month by President Ronald Reagan in nineteen eighty-eight, and was enacted into law to honor the past and the future contributions of Hispanics. And whereas the two thousand twenty-five National Hispanic Heritage Month, month theme, Collective Heritage Honoring the Past, Inspiring the Future, celebrates the rich traditions of the Hispanic community while emphasizing their continued growth and achievements. And whereas the theme highlights the significant contributions of Hispanic individuals in driving innovation and progress across fields such as politics, human rights, medicine, engineering, art, culture, farming, and public services, reflecting the resilience, creativity, and unity of the Hispanic community, and it goes on. Now therefore, be it resolved that Monterey County Board of Education adopts resolution number twenty five, twenty six, zero, three to recognize National Hispanic Heritage Month from September fifteenth to October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and encourages Monterey County School Districts, schools, and community members to honor the history, customs, and contributions of the Hispanic community while supporting their progress through education and enrichment opportunities. So congratulations. Now. Alex, everybody. Friends and senior. Can we see them?
Okay, Melissa over here, wait, 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 oh, Morris, because I couldn't see you behind, stay under there. Okay, ready, one, two, three. Okay.
Great. Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Is it okay? Yeah, no. I was hoping that you, yeah, got a chance to. Excellent. Okay. Sounds great. Thank you both. We'll see you soon. Thank you.
So it has been requested that we take a five-minute break. Okay. So we're gonna take a five-minute quick break. Then we'll be back. Absolutely. I'll be back too.
And adoption of resolution number 252606. Availability of textbooks and instructional materials for 2025-26. It's a time certain at four o'clock. It's on page 39 of your agenda, and I will open the public hearing at 4:01 it looks like. Yes, 4:01. So, um.
Dr. Stanley, okay.
Yes, Dr. Stanley, please.
Yeah, I'm happy to do just speak to this. This is our annual public hearing on the adoption and for the availability of textbooks and instruction materials for 2025-26. And this ed code requirement is to make sure that we hold this public hearing on or before the end of the eighth week of the first day when pupils in classes. And our particular resolution includes open door charters, specialized safety programs, all of our alternative education programs and home birth. So be I need to the actual agenda item and then the resolution. You will see the lists of instructional materials for each of the entities. And nothing has been changed since the prior year. So we are, we are presenting to you the same curriculum as last year.
Great, thank you. Is there any public comment or input on this item? Are any comments from the board? Questions for Dr. Stanley from the board? Seeing none, I am going to close the public hearing at 4:02.
All right. This is not unusual. We place this meeting in the afternoon just to make sure it's more accessible to the public in case there's any public comment in every year. That, that just tells you we do a good job of vetting all of our material with the public prior to ever bringing it to the board for adoption.
Okay, so we have a few more minutes.
Oh, don't we have to adopt the resolution?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Move approval of resolution number 252606.
Can I get a second? It's been moved and seconded, all in favor. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, so we are on to, I'm gonna, whoops, I'm lost where we are. Eight point four. Okay, payment of claims for August 1025, page 65 in your agenda, Dr. Stanley.
Thank you. So this is the listing of all the payment of claims for August 2025. I did have a couple of questions that I will go over. The first one is for Ventana Wildlife Society. And that was a, an amount of 73,000. So just, this is an amazing program that we partner with to give our students some weekly outdoor nature classes. So this is for our alternative education programs and Wellington Smith School, as well as Salinas Community School take advantage of these. It's a partnership with Ventana, they get some funding and we provide some funding. Our funding is coming from Equity Multiplier this year, so it's an excellent way to use those funds. We actually had a really great posting on the Facebook web, Facebook page for Monterey County Office of Education about this partnership and that it was posted and it was posted on August 8th.
And if you're wondering how we do that partnership in Wellington Smith, Dr. Bella is here and speak to how Ventana Wilderness, how does that happen in a lot facility?
So first and foremost, the partnership with probation has to be solid in terms of embedding any agency that comes into the facilities. That is to ensure that all of the personnel that comes into for the facilities have the appropriate background checks to make sure that they work closely with our students and collaborate with their staff. Ventana in particular, given the environment of our students, I'd aim to do many outdoor events as their name suggests, Ventana's Wilderness. And so they often bring in, whether it's science experiments, whether it hands on, you know, at Juvenile, Juvenile Hall, at the Monterey County Juvenile Hall, we've been so fortunate now, probably in our fifth year, even prior to the pandemic to have established the garden. And the Ventana serves as an outdoor instructional facility. And so they try to get the students out and, and by nature that also helps develop leadership skills within our students, collaboration, teamwork, all of what the soft skills that are essential for our students. And so that's one way that we work with Ventana. Certainly, the, the opportunities and experiences enhance in the community school because now we have access to Toro Park, for example, and the, the slough, for example, right? So, but within the law facilities is trying to bring many opportunities outside the classroom. Certainly within the restricted environment, but nevertheless, those hands-on opportunities that are valuable for the students.
Another question was about the cyber systems, which was 138,000. This is software, a software that we purchased through special education for IEPs. So it's an IEP software that we purchase every year. It's very commonly used across the state. $99,000 for Imagine Learning. This was Home Charter School online curriculum that they were purchasing. I think Nadine mentioned that too, when she came and talked to us last time about that she was going to start using some online programming and it's specifically for math and English. Both of those, and so she's going to try that out and see what kind of result she gets out of that. The 285,000 for CSU Fresno Foundation. This was funny because last time when we had a question about CSU, the foundation, it wasn't this, but we had thrown out, we thought it was migrant, but this one is definitely for the migrant. The four weeks that our students, there were 64 students that got to go to, to Fresno. And a lot of the instruction for this four weeks was STEAM. So that was a great event. And the 205,000 to CDE, we were overly ambitious with our application for our CTE programs. And so we had to send some of that money back. We have new people in place now, and that will never happen again. Because we are really working hard on those CTE pathways right now.
Can you explain that a little bit more? What, what did we get that we didn't do that we had to refund?
And, and I will defer again to Dr. Bella because he was explaining this very thing to us the other day.
Yes, in, in our CTE grants, which is the college and career or car, career technical education, we were overly ambitious to identify three pathways. We identified the transportation pathway, which incorporates our Bob Hoover Academy. That's the aviation mechanics and ground school that we are performing there. That, that's been gone forward without a hitch. We also identified an arts media and entertainment. So prior to the blessing of working with our own Medicaid, we were attempting to create a curriculum to engage students more in engineering and arts media such as programming, video production, coding, for example. We had a challenge with hiring CTE teachers. That continues to be a challenge across the state. Recognizing that CTE teachers, very much like adult education teachers, are not quite on the pathway and thus salary level of a normal K-12 or pre-K-12 teacher. CTE teachers are more industry experts. So the simple example I can give is we're seeking an aviation mechanic that you all may imagine their hourly rate to come in essentially as an entry level educator at the salary that they, that they come in to, to make that jump. And so that challenge presents itself. Unfortunately, that led to some unspent funds because the timing of the implementation just didn't take place because of those challenges. The adjustments that we're making now is being more innovative. Thanks to technology moving forward, there are technologies, for example, virtual reality that would allow a normal credential teacher to supervise the activities where the students now engage to virtual, virtual reality. You might have heard of the Oculus headsets, for example. And there's a variety of other products out there that give the students these real world experience in the virtual reality space. Keep in mind that the CTE pathway determines a three-year progression. Year one is all exploration, year two is concentration, and then year three is capstone. So for the exploration phase, when we just want to give kids this taste, let's say I'm a CTE student and I want to taste construction. I'm not sure if that's something for me, but I want to try it out. I want to try the health, the, the health sector. For the orientation exploration phase, the virtual reality is very appropriate because it's not at an expert level that they're starting to learn. It's just like a buffet, I call it. It's just a taste of very many. Once we get into concentrators and then definitely to the culmination, that's when it's going to be required for us to have better industry and maybe physical or human beings, right, teaching our students because it's more concentration. And then at that level, that's when we're starting to do virtual, like job shadow, we're doing internships, we're doing work study. Because at that point, now the student is very involved, now concentrated. If they want to go aviation mechanic, at that point, it's no longer the basics. Now you're in a deeper understanding of that transition. So, so long story short, and in summary, we were overly ambitious of having three pathways where we were really only able to develop one, which is the one at Bob Hoover. Now we're moving forward, we have now this now. And after this grant period, now we've been able to establish a partnership with our own Medicaid. I think you are all familiar with the Milian of all this and the work that they're doing in Medicaid. And now at Salinas Community School, we have the robotics program underway. We have, that's part of the engineering pathway that we were very ambitious about. And then the arts media and entertainment one, there you have music production, you have coding, we have video production, all of that elements. There's still some on the horizon. What we're working now and Gladio is a big part of this, and this is where we connect to Gladio, Career Tree, et cetera, is that we're trying to define what industry, what industries are relevant here in Monterey County. Of course, the go-tos are agriculture, we all know that. But then we know that there's an underlying shipping industry that, I mean, Amazon being now one of our neighbors, that there is now a niche for additional industry sectors way above and beyond agriculture. And so we want to take the opportunity to assess those new industries that are coming to the Central Coast to then match those up to the, to the pathways that we're trying to identify. And so that's really what's on our plate now on the horizon. And I mean, I look forward with Dr. Jess' permission and Gavin's to, to bring more information to you probably in a couple of months as we're progressing in that area.
Thank you.
Thank you for the explanation.
Okay, are there any?
Unless there's any other questions?
Any other questions for Dr. Stanley? Hi, seeing none. Thank you, Dr. Stanley. Okay, it is 4:15. So we are going to move to our time certain, six point three. It's going to be the closed session.
And we do have two closed session items. So what we're going to do is we're putting out our closed session sign, we're going to close the doors. We will be covering the first closed session item. Let's see here. Yes, about our negotiations on property. So what we're going to do is ask the audience to please wait outside. It should be very, very fast, and then we'll ask you to come back in and we'll pick the next closed session item. And this should be pretty fast. Passing down right now is the appraisal report for the childcare facility. So just to quickly give just a little bit of history because I know we've talked about this space a little bit, but some of you have been here, some of you have not been here. We want to get everybody in the caught up to the same understanding.
Close.
All right, thank you. Reports from the superintendent.
I'm going to be super quick because we have to get to Spredal. So I'm passing down the calendar of all the various events that I've gone to. I'm not going to comment on any of these. I do want to let you know, though, that we were notified by the California Department of Education staff that this letter that they sent us, this is really for county committee, but I need to let you know now, they have an error on the letter that they sent out before and the letter that they just sent on September 9th. We got it because it says that that matter will be heard at the state board November 12th and 13th. And then the call that we got said that's an error. Now they are going expecting to hear it on the 5th or the 6th. So change in date, which really is problematic for us, but we'll talk about that later. I just needed to give you the heads up on that one right now. And then I think that's it.
Wait, it is the 5th and 6th or it's been moved?
It's the 5th and the 6th. We don't know if they moved it, they just called.
That's what they told us before.
They did.
It was the 5th and 6th.
No, they both times the letter says the 11th and, or sorry, that or this letter says the 12th and the 13th, but this is an error. It's going to be the 5th or the 6th.
Okay.
Okay, that's it. We're going to move right along.
Okay, thank you. 9.2 Staff Reports. Are there any questions on 9.2.1 Early Learning Program Monthly Reports? Or 9.2.2 Early Learning Program Annual Report to the Board? Any questions on those?
Okay, comments by board members?
I said, yes, I know we're short on time. Did anyone else see the article in the New York Times entitled "Reading Skills of 12th Graders Hit a New Low"?
I did not.
It was a very interesting article, so maybe I can discuss it at the next meeting. But it started out saying high school seniors had the worst reading scores since 1992 on a national test, a loss probably related to increases in screen time and the pandemic. Their math scores also failing. In math, 12th graders have the lowest performance since 2005.
Can you maybe forward it to Cindy or Danine and then we can get it to you?
I just did a screenshot, so if I can find it again, I'll.
That'd be great.
Any other comments from the board? I did have comments on the conference, but maybe I'll save it for the next board meeting.
I would, I do too, but I.
I understand where, all right, we're on to 11.1 Legislation. John?
Yeah, going fast. There's a couple charter school initiatives that are related to oversight as well as continuing to keep the moratorium on non-classroom-based charter schools going. CSBA is positioning itself. It's not supporting two bills, it's supporting another one. So that's to be determined. The one that you all need to be aware of is called AB495. And don't have a lot of time, but this was, this is a bill that is being advocated for by migrant advocates concerned about children being left in limbo if their parents are picked up by ICE. It basically says that, you know, if the parents didn't put down on the piece of paper of who is authorized to come pick up their child, that other family members can come and say, basically claim that. It's extremely controversial because people are saying, well, then the pedophiles would just come and claim all the children. And it's, it is a, it's kind of blown up into somebody, something no one expected. It's stuck in the Senate right now and it's probably not going to get out. But you might hear about that one. CSBA has taken no position on it, kind of waiting to see what happens. And the last thing I have is CSBA lost one of their longtime staff members. Erica Hoffman died. And she's been there for a long, long time and she was primarily their advocate at the federal level. And she, she passed away unexpectedly. So that's all I have.
I'd just like to comment, I'd just like to say thank you for putting my husband in your prayers and thank you for your support. I was away and it was a difficult time, but now everything is just taking life again. So I thank everyone of you for your support.
Thank you. We're glad he's doing better. 11.2 Annette, Community Human Services.
I reserve my report and give you two months.
Okay, 11.3 Child Abuse Prevention Council, I'll make it very brief. Dr. Dretona Maddox is giving a webinar on Beyond Awareness: Turning Insight into Impact for Homeless and Foster Youth on September 25th from 11:00 to 12:30, 11:00 AM to 12:30 via Zoom. I believe you can register on the CAPSC website. And our next meeting is on October 6th at 3:30. 11.4 Mary?
Nope, no report.
No report. I am going to hold my 11.5 because it's important that we go over that. We do not have enough time. So can we move that to our next agenda? Consideration of Items for Future Meetings, we have item 3.5 to go on. We have item 11.5. Are there any resolutions besides the Robin McCray Resolution?
Is 3.5 the one we pulled from the consent?
Yes.
Okay, Sophia, I make a motion that for item 3.5, we move it to its own agenda slot at the next meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
And can we add the conference that we all just went to? And, you know, just to remind us to talk about it next time?
Okay, so we've got agenda items, we've got resolutions. Our next meeting date is going to be October 15th at 9:00 AM. Your agenda items are due on October 3rd. We are adjourning the meeting in memory of Jimena Reyes Ortiz. And with that and best condolences to her family, we will adjourn at 5:44.